Third and final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
I'm sorry? Is anyone allowed to make a comment? Come up? About regarding that ordinance?
Oh, sorry.
Regarding the Planet Unit Development Ordinance?
It's about the smart.
No, that's not what we were discussing. Okay. Next, we'll move to ordinance 1092 to discuss the touchpad meter policy changes. And I know that Darren, before we get started, you had met with Carl and had some changes regarding the language in the ordinance. If you'll discuss those first, and then we'll open it up to public hearing. If there's any comment, we'll address it at the time. Not right this second.
At our previous meeting, we had a suggestion that there was a fee involved with installation of a meter when there was a swap out made of $15. That was removed for this. Also, in this interim time, Carl had some other suggestions that he wanted to make to change the ordinance, and those all took place in paragraph A. I laid copies out for everyone. They're black and white copies, but the PDF is online, so you can look at it in color if you'd like. But the gray areas concern tapping fees for new water service to residential homes, and also new water service requiring meters larger than an average residential service. The actual wording changes for the entire paragraph A as follows. "All water supplied to customers by the City Water Works shall be metered. The City Water Works will supply, comma, and install a standard residential meter for household use at no charge, period." There's some language struck after that. However, "a tapping fee will be charged for any new service line, period. This fee shall include a standard residential meter, tapping saddle with use of corporation valve, and one man-hour labor. There will be an additional charge for installations of new service line meters larger than a standard residential service. Those costs will be assessed per the size of actual meter, materials, and labor to complete installation." And then there was just some small wording after that that was changed down to the last line after the word repaired, added a comma for, or identified for replacement per the current City Water Works replacement program. And that line pertains to meters that were swapping out. We have a program in place now where after so long a period of time, a meter is scheduled to be swapped out. And so that puts that in to the ordinance as per the procedural plan that the Water Department has. After that, from that point on, we just have-
But not subject, but not subject to the charges that are mentioned for the new-
Right. There's no charges for that. And again, beyond that, everything else remains the same as it was published or put out at the previous council meetings with removal of the opt-out program.
Thank you. Carl, I just asked, do you have any comments on the idea of inserting the charges for the new lines at this time?
Oh, it does.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Then we'll ask the council if there's any comment that they have based on the reading from the first to the second. John?
Yeah, I think this is good change. I would just maybe take issue with the, maybe tweak the wording here slightly, just on one hand, because it's like the English isn't clear. On another hand, just for my information, I just wanted to ask. Now, we're saying there's going to be a fee for new, a new line, for a tapping fee for a new line, but we don't say how much it's going to be. So we're just gonna leave it vague. I guess that's all right for us to just all leave it vague, and it's gonna be the going price at the time, whatever's considered fair by the Water Department. That's just presumed in this, I guess. And I guess I'm all right with that. Go ahead.
Yeah, come on up.
Because before we had, you know, specific fees listed, and now we're saying there's going to be a fee, and it's just vague, so.
We're gonna break that down, I guess, and break it into each number. But what that really amounts to is the fact that it just depends on what size of water main that you're tapping.
Right.
So we should determine the size of the saddle that's used. Consequently, the larger the saddle, the more cost. If you want a two-quarter inch tap or an inch tap, it is, I mean, we can break it all down, break it all down for each possible scenario and put a value on it, but just, I think this is a general wording, just to cover everything, all the variances that may apply depending upon the size of the main and the equipment, or the parts that they have to supply to make the tap. I'd say that it varies from side tap to tap, not all mains are the same size, so it would just, that was why the variance is in there, and why the prices may vary, because the parts may cost more.
Yeah.
Or that's depending upon, for instance.
I mean, that's understandable. I don't think it's necessary to be that specific what the fee is here. But when we say, "This fee shall include a standard residential meter," to me, that's not, it's not good English. The fee doesn't include a meter. The fee includes a charge for a standard residential meter. So I would just add that word. The fee doesn't include a meter. The fee includes a charge for the meter.
Cost of the meter.
I mean, it's pretty clear. I mean, we're implied-
What you're saying is it does. What Carl's saying is it does include the cost of the meter.
No, I'm just saying the language here right now.
He wants the word "charge" inserted between "A" and "standard."
Thank you. That's what I'm saying. Just 'cause I feel like we should have proper English, 'cause it's not, if you just say, "The fee shall include a standard residential meter," anyway, maybe I'm being picky and it's not necessary.
It's okay, John. You're the professor. That's what we expected. All right, so.
Carl, just for clarification, now, this new wording, the way I understand, is nothing different than procedure that you're already doing within the Water Department.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only difference is that we aren't affixing an actual number to the work that's done, because the fees are set as policy by the department. And if you put them in your ordinance, then when the fees change by policy, then they have to change in the ordinance as well. While this may sound vague, it's kind of intentionally that way so that the department publishes their fees periodically, and when they do that, I believe you do that annually, don't you, Carl, with your, no? You do have, you do have them listed in, upfront, so that anybody that comes in that wants to review them can do that.
Yeah.
So if there is questions from a customer at the front counter for what this charge is and what that charge is, then there is documentation there.
Yeah, I call it general language, not vague language.
Okay. General.
Yeah. Okay. Great.
And would we change the effective date if we were to pass this from the second to third reading tonight?
That would, that would have to take place, too.
Okay.
If that was had.
Okay, well, open up the public hearing at this time. Is there any comment on the second reading of the ordinance?
Hi, I just have a question, or two questions, on the addition of, at the bottom of paragraph A where it says, "Or identify for replacement per the current City Water Works replacement program." So I'm assuming, by the way, as a background, that this is per the state mandate, I guess, to continue to replace. Is that the reason for, that's not my question, but I'm just assuming, is my assumption correct, that it's per the state mandate to replace meters on a regular basis? Is that-
We'll just try to keep them accurate, you know, as accurate as possible. We want to get the less accurate they become, so we're just trying to, the meters as accurate as, or as accurate as possible.
Okay, yeah. So my question is, per this sentence that refers to, you want to keep the meters accurate. Two questions. One is, how many meters a month going forward do you think you'll be replacing? And your best guess. And then, when you need to replace those, the ones that you've identified need to be replaced, are you going to be asking the homeowner if they want a wireless meter or a touchpad meter?
We'll present them with any options that we have at the time, yeah.
Okay, so you're, whoever, you're, you know, in the department, whoever's there, will let them know that there are two options, at least at this time?
Yeah, whatever options we have available at the time will be offered to the folks that are having a meter changed out yet.
Okay. All right, that's all.
Any other comments?
My name is Christian Zinn. I'm a new resident of Fairfield for about seven months. I'm glad to be here. I live on 185th Street, and I'm really just standing here, I want to say thank you and salute both sides. Since I've been here, I've come to most of the meetings, and I realize it's a pretty heated issue with these smart meters. But I'm kind of happy to see, I come from a town outside of New York, Huntington, Long Island, and it's not so easy to get these things done. And I come back that way. So I want to salute everybody, too. I'm really happy to see the two, that the people are given the option to opt out and in the future, moving to the fiber optic to make it more safe. And I think down the road, that in the future, Fairfield will be looked at as one of the towns in the vanguard that made moves on this, and I'm glad to see that the talent shows you to move to. So thank you, and I thank both sides.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Any other comments?
So I'd like to echo that the gentleman's previous statement, and thank the council and also the mayor for coming to this decision and proposing this particular ordinance. And I think it goes a long way to provide a resolution to heal any division that may have existed in our community over this issue. And as the gentleman said, at times, it has been somewhat heated. But I think this has really got a huge way to restore unity to our community. And I particularly like to single out and thank Kevin Flanagan, Darren Hamilton, and also Carl in the Water Department for their persistence in finding a solution that works for everybody, and for taking into account everybody's concerns in this respect. So I hope that in the future, we can all go forwards with this and cooperate together. So thank you much again.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing. I'd just like to make a follow-up comment on your very gracious compliments. I really want to turn those to Carl, who manages this department and runs a staff that really had to deal with the issue on a day-to-day basis, and that's where it was really trying at times. You know, we were, we were having a discussion, and we were trying to, you know, move something forward that, you know, that we addressed immediately. But I want to point out that our initial position in going towards an opt-out, even with fees, was in support of the judgment that our manager, our superintendent Carl, had made. And that's the way we work here. We have, we have a trust of our employees. We feel that they, that they come to the decision in a reasonable and responsible fashion. We're going to support it. Carl changed his position, which is what we have right now, so we're here to support that, too. And as a local government process, we were engaged immediately. We tried to tell everyone and explain to everyone that it would be a two-step process. It would be opt-out first, and it would be finding a suitable alternative second, and to please be patient with us. I'm not sure that everybody was patient at all times, which is part of the unfortunate part of what we all went through, but that's, that's part of our job as elected officials. That's fine. But I do really want to give the cred, the credits to Carl and to Kevin also, in working with Carl to help reach this decision. So thank you very much. So on our agenda, we do have a proposal to potentially waive this second reading and move it to the final. I know we have introduced some new language, although I think this language is essentially stating what we do already, as Connie had pointed out. And I don't feel it necessarily controversial that we would need to carry it before another hearing, if, if it's the wish of the council to move this forward. With all the sweet sentiments tonight, why not? Might as well finish it up.
Move to suspend the rules.
Okay. Move by Hallie to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second by Boyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Okay, now we are prepared to pass this from the second to the third and final reading. I'm sorry, yes, to the third and final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Boyer. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, council will move to ordinance, this will be our first reading, and it'll be rezoning from B1 to R3. There are several lots at 107 West Hempstead Avenue. Kevin, I'd ask you to kind of bring us up to date on this request.
Yes, I have had no oral or written comments about it, the change, and it's fairly rudimentary. I think it reflects the nature of what will be the ongoing use of the property, but no oral or written comments.
Any questions? This is also a public hearing. If there are any comments? Now, we'll close the public hearing and ask if the council wishes to move or waive.
I have a question on that. What's, what's the reason for the expedience from first through third tonight?
I should have spoke to that in an email or something at some point. Basically, what we've done with the agenda is to show you what you can do, and not, it's not really actually on your agenda. Your agenda in the future will show this way. We will always show motion to waive first or second, or motion to waive second, depending on which reading it is. Just showing you have that option, but not necessarily a recommendation. If I were to be recommending or desirous of a waiving of the readings for whatever reason, I would actually request it verbally. This just kind of reflects what your ability is to do on each motion every time.
Well, in my line of thinking, it represents that there is some expressed belief that it needs to be done, and I'm not sure as to whether that should be included in the agenda like that, since this is part of a public record. If it isn't, then there needs to be some explanation as to why we haven't moved it from first through the third, since it's already stated in the agenda that that was the intent. So my preference in the future would be to not have that included. I think we, as council people, always recognize the fact that through procedure, we have that ability to move something from first to third.
Think it may be misleading.
Yeah, it can be. It can be a little misleading.
I mean, there's all kinds of things that we could do that we, that we don't want to list.
Sure. Sure. Yeah. Well, and true, true that, and I thought it would, I've done agendas that way in the past. I thought it might be something we do, but we don't have to do it. No, we can, we can take it off.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
I think myself, I would prefer that. I don't know the wishes of the rest of the council.
Oh, that would be fine, yeah.
Okay.
And there I was, thinking you might like it.
Sorry.
Makes the agenda longer, too.
We've been learned about moving from first to third before.
Yeah, not a re-
It's a little apprehensive to that.
On this one in particular, I actually would request moving from, but in typical situations, at least two readings of a rezoning.
Well, I guess, I guess it goes back to my initial question, then. Is there really a reason for doing it from first to third, rather than doing first to second, and then maybe at the next meeting, moving it on through the final reading at that point in time?
It would be a rudimentary thing to do. It'd just, in the interest of no written or oral comments would be the only reason I would request it. But no, I think it'd be fine to, to go ahead and read it a couple of times, at least.
Okay, I'd like to move this from the first to the second reading.
I can.
Motion by Hamilton, second by Hallie, to approve the first reading of rezoning property at 107 West Hempstead from a B1 to an R3.
Okay, I've caught some questions.
Sure.
So is this the, the property that was the Jefferson County Human Services? Who, is the person applying for this here? Just two questions.
No, Rusty actually is not here.
So is this, is that what the property is? It's the, across from the-
107 West Hempstead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance to drive by, so I don't know exactly where that property is.
That'd be a 50 block. That would not be that building.
No, it wouldn't be that.
No, it's just a, it's just like a, a small, a home.
Right. So is it right across from the Hempstead? Yes. There's the Human Services.
Isn't it the, the building that used to be part of the Mainstay Inn? There was their second, their kind of, they bought a property that was-
Little cottage.
Little cottage, and then the lady, lady took that over, so it's no longer part of Mainstay, and I think she wants to keep it as a, as something.
Yeah, he's looking more like at R3 choice for it, but now if we start talking about that old oak tree, I'm not. You're using references. I'm not familiar with-
The location that, you're wanting to know the location, and that, that's more what you were stating, is that it's next to the Mainstay Inn.
Yeah, it's next to it, but I'm not sure what the use would have been-
To the west of it.
In the great past, but he's wanting to go, you know, more residential uses, R3 uses for it, rather than business.
This is Mainstay?
Yeah.
And that's air, outbuilding.
It may have been a business at one time.
It was, I think it was part of the Mainstay.
No, Human Services is just north of the corner.
They changed their, they changed their zoning to sell the, to be able to sell their property as a home.
Oh, okay.
Very kind of mislabeled. Okay, I got it. All right. Now I know which one it is.
Have we have motioned? Is there any discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, council, we have a resolution to accept the preliminary plat for the Amherst subdivision.
Yes.
And our developer, Terry Lever, is here this evening. Do you have any questions for him? Go ahead, Kevin.
I was gonna say, Your Honor, the changes that were, some of that new language that was put into that PUD, per John's review and our discussions of what we might need to include in that, have been done on a verbal level with the, the Amherst subdivision plans. There is landscaping provisions in there, all the kind of details that we would want are in there, so I just wanted to make sure and stress that. And this would be, of course, just preliminary plat. We still have final plat approval to go through with Planning Commission, and now, of course, that we've passed the code, we, you know, we'll be going along in that framework, so.
And entertain a motion to accept the plat?
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any other discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a resolution determining the necessity of fixing date for a public hearing on the matter of the adoption of a proposed commercial industrial residential urban revitalization plan. John?
Sounds like something John wrote, right?
Necessity of fixing a date. Wow, that's bureaucracy at its best.
This has been a notice nightmare. That's the only reason that you're doing this another time.
Right.
There's already a fourth of the notices sent out by the Water Department advising that this will be the new date, so urging you to accept November 26 as the time for the public hearing on the revitalization plan. Assuming we have no objections to the revitalization plan, we might still get adoption issued.
Okay, great.
We do have some more notice lists being worked on right now, courtesy of the auditor and assessor, departments here in City Hall. So it will work.
Okay, great. Thank you. So then, entertain a motion to set November 26 as the date for a public hearing regarding the urban revitalization plan.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Boyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Thank you. Maybe now we'll move down to, oh, I will mention in my report that we're all eagerly waiting the announcement tomorrow by the Blue Zone Commission regarding the small cities in Iowa. So I guess everyone's gonna be notified in the morning through press release, so watch for your newspaper and listen to your radios and see if we were chosen. So it'll be exciting if we are, and if not, I think we've got a good group that'll carry these kinds of initiatives forward, but have a good feeling about it. Next, we'll move on to our committee reports, Public Safety and Transportation.
Susan, usually chair, she was ill today, so I filled that role. Connie and I represented the committee. We met at 5:15 here in the Chamber Council today. We were joined by Chief Harvey, Kevin Flanagan, and seven concerned citizens. In a nutshell, all seven were very, very much in favor of instituting a bow hunting season yet this year. We were hoping to have a representative from the state DNR come and discuss some of the details. He didn't make it, so we had, we had our own discussion and talked about the whole program. Connie's done a lot of good research. She has other towns' ordinances and information. We heard a lot of stories of gardens being eaten and landscape being eaten and all sorts of things being eaten by deer, and Chief Harvey can, can testify to the growing numbers of car accidents within city limits, deer being struck. So we feel the problem is very real, and we wanted to get moving yet this year before doing an aerial study this winter. So committee has been formed, that Connie, Connie will head, Chief Harvey is part of that, Dave Fredericks, Scott Tim, and Kevin will be there for additional support. They will work out an initial ordinance and then bring it to the council and see if we can maybe do a few weekends yet this fall, kind of a condensed season, try it out, see how it goes, learn something. The tagging fees that the state charges for seem a little prohibitive, so we're seeing if the city can get a deprivation, with its deprivation status or something, where if you can prove that the deer are having a negative impact economically, then you can get lower tagging fees per deer that's killed. So we're looking at all these things, but we want to try to get the ball rolling sooner rather than later, because it seems evident that this is a real issue.
Does, does this type of season have to run in conjunction with the existing bow hunting season for the state of Iowa? Because I believe bow hunting is currently, bow season is currently open in the state of Iowa.
I guess that's a good question. I don't really know how to answer that. I would say probably, I don't know that it's required, but I think most of them are done during that timeframe.
I would think that that would be something that we would need to look into, and if that's the case, if we would have, have to have an opportunity to-
I can answer that.
Oh, you can? Good, thank you.
We, we researched this when you added the district out next to Jefferson County Park. You already have an ordinance in place if you just add regions to it, and they did require that you stay within October 1st to January 15th, prior to the bow hunting season, which is on them, so.
So then-
Michael points about the deprivation exemption and so forth. Those would be good things if we could get them.
So then, work on this should be expedient.
Yeah, yeah. We know we don't have much time, and it may just be two weekends this time.
Yeah, and there, there was certainly, from the people who were there, I think the idea is not to maybe have it open, that whole- idea is not to maybe have it open that whole, that whole deer season, but to have it really a short, intensive, you know, make a week, a two week, two weekends, whatever, so that the period is short, so it's more comfortable for the community on that level.
Okay.
So, I think that's sort of the plan that we're going with, that we're going into committee with.
Okay, and would that be, would the end result then be a season within a season, specifically just for dates within the city of Fairfield excluding what we've already done for the area of Jefferson County Park that lies within the city of Fairfield?
Yeah, the city ordinance would be very specific, not just about dates, but locations, approved locations, have to have certain setbacks.
Well, yeah, we'd have to have some sort of language in that to, to make it more specific to what defines that within the city, since part of Jefferson County Park, which we already have bow hunting in, is within the city and was approved that way.
That's true, you can make yours more restrictive than what you do with parks.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Probably somewhat similar, using deer stands, so there's that downward angle, you know, there's-
Yeah, I would, I would think that those types of rules, but spec, being specific on, on weekends or dates or however that would work, that's something that the committee is gonna need to look at as well, so.
We were also talking about having a certain bit of feet between what a trail, the trail system, 150 feet from, and aspects like that too, being in terms of that.
I think there's that already in what we did for the Jefferson County Park, is you had to be so many feet away from the trail.
Yeah, 75 feet from the trail, 150 feet from buildings.
Right, there was concern that people walking on the trail would be mistaken for deer at that time, I recall, so.
So, Michael, the, the report from the committee then is that this is going to move forward, and there, you're going to bring an ordinance to discuss-
Yeah, we're forming a subcommittee to do the work on that, and that's gonna move forward as soon as Connie calls her meeting.
Great.
Great.
Can I do my quiet zone report now? It's part of public safety.
Now, see, what you need to do is not put this motion to waive on the agenda, you need to put the quiet zone report on the permit. So, oh yeah, go ahead.
All right. So, all the medians are poured except for this little one on the south side of Fourth, so that part of the construction's done. Next phase is to seal the joints on the medians, to paint them, to paint the roads leading up to the tracks with the standard railroad crossing white X marking, and our friend Darrell will get the signage ready, including the no train horns, which go under the, the yellow railroad signs, but we have to bag those, to cover those up until we're official. So, it'll all be in place, I've got a review committee, I'm sorry, a review meeting set for the 25th, Thursday, the 25th of this month, with representatives from the railroad company and the state DOT. We had our FRA rep come through already, he probably won't be able to make it backs, but he'll be available by phone. Just gonna go through all the crossings, make sure everything's legit. After that, the city can then file our notice of establishment, which is the final paperwork, and 21 days from when that's mailed is when the train horns are silent, so, I can't say exactly when that will be. I would like to say this year, I'd like to say even maybe November, but I've, I've always gone with the best case scenario in the past, I'm such an optimist, and now I'm trying to give realistic timeframes, let's just, just all hope for as soon as possible.
Thanks, Michael.
I, Your Honor, I would add-
So, put the reports till the end of the year.
On, on every agenda, definitely, in 20.5, but I would add a bit of comment to that too. We, we do have some measure of overage on the quiet zone program. Now, it's not an, not what I would say would be an inordinate amount, but it is not, they're not change orders, they are overage in quantities of material used for a couple of different reasons. We'll be getting into that perhaps at our next meeting, at our next update, because we're kind of going through that right now. Mel and I will be meeting tomorrow to go through what those changes exactly are, but basically overage in the quantity of materials used for a couple of different reasons, and we'll get into that a little bit later when we further define that.
And how, there are still how many crossings to be constructed?
None.
None, I would say we're probably around 90% completion.
You said just the one median needs-
The little, the little one on the south side of Fourth will be poured in the morning, and that's it.
Right, okay. So, there's, will that add to any potential overage that there is right now?
I don't think so. I think we're kind of where we're at on it at that, at this point. It includes main, B and D, I think, areas on main, B and D on the curb and guttering.
I would have to check with Stephen.
So, it was on, it was on the curb and guttering, and there wasn't a curb and guttering on Port Street, so.
I did talk to Stephen, he doesn't expect the painting wall to have any overruns.
It, I don't expect anymore, it was overseen location where the seam was, and we had an overlay on portions of the street that, that apusicated where the seam appeared to be during-
Apusication?
Apusication, it's actually a word.
You've got your computer, look it up on your, uh-
Confused the, the situation.
I need a thesaurus to keep up with you.
Obscured the, the actual line there.
It's one of those things, you don't know what, what you've got, so you start digging.
Apusication, yeah.
All right, I like, I like that.
Obthu, but it did.
Thanks, Michael, I had just a question for, for Darrell possibly. Darrell, on the, on the medians themselves, when you approach them, and that tapered portion that, that goes up towards the top, in, at nighttime, I know that, you know, just as you get to the top, we've got a reflective sign, but that area, sometimes when I'm approaching it, I'm concerned that someone may, may miss it, or, I'm just wondering if we could do any kind of reflecting equipment on that portion so that you know exactly where that median starts, as opposed to where the sign shows the reflection.
Well, I don't know exactly how the painting's supposed to go, because we're not doing that. Whoever does that, if they put glass beads in that-
That's what I was thinking, yeah, the beads, yeah.
My thought is, and I don't know, I haven't talked to whoever's doing it, but to paint the whole median, the sides and the top, is where the, where the sign poster in now, where you have the arrow going around, we're gonna put, we get all the signs up, we'll put some chips in there, just to, some of the steps in there, but I thought that, that we would paint the sides and the top all of it yellow, and then at least that section of it, put reflective beads, glass beads.
Good.
But I don't know what the, I don't know what the painting specs are for.
Specs are generally, you just paint the sides yellow, including that slope there that Ed's concerned about ramping off of, just the same standard yellow curving.
Are you gonna paint the top of it yellow?
Not the entire top, there's a little bit of wraparound, but, I mean, I'm just talking based on what I saw in Burlington.
And I would say if you're gonna paint just a little bit, you might as well paint the whole thing.
I'd just, I'd be concerned about-
Then we're gonna have overruns, and then we're gonna have to charge somebody, like-
Well, that's not gonna be, all I'm saying is when we get started painting, I don't wanna have to start taping it off and say, okay, we gotta keep a straight line here.
Okay, the whole thing.
Okay. Where it comes to glass, though, I'd be concerned about on the sides, because you're gonna be, when you, when you're scraping, you might be grabbing it and pulling, you know, pulling pieces of it out or whatever. More reflective on top might be the more important, where the light hits it, I don't-
Right, I was just talking about that section that Ed's talking about.
The section, that early section.
Otherwise, if you can look through the light, you don't have the glass beads reflecting, it's not gonna do you good on the sides or the top, either one.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
So, is the glass bead, how's that, I guess we talked about this earlier, but-
It's, it's set, the reflectors that are set in the road, see those.
No, no, you're, you're just talking about glass beads that are mixed in with the paint as it's being sprayed onto the curb itself, or onto the lines, and, and that does have a reflective quality to it, and it will be more reflective since it's on an angle back to you rather than a flat surface like the street that you drive down coming to it. But it has a shelf life of seasons along with it, but you're planning on repainting yearly, as you do with crosswalks and, and other types of painting activities that go on here in the city, and we're already capable of doing that kind of thing, and I'm certain that it was specification in the contract that they use a reflective, probably waterborne paint to put on this, so, there will be some reflective qualities to it, and you will have an opportunity to be able to see that, rather than just the signage reflecting back at you when, when you come up on it.
All right. Thanks for the report, Michael.
I, I can't speak to what the specs say, I'll check with it back to the office, I came in on the quiet zone project later, but I, I will look into it, and when Kevin and I meet to discuss the quantities, I can give him an update as what's going to be put, and if additional is needed, we can discuss that later, and Kevin can report back to you.
Great, thank you. Okay, next, council will move to our department reports, and I'd asked Chief Harvey to report on the drill that took place on Saturday morning.
We gave birth, that's all I can say, we finally got it done. This has been a, we've been planning this for over a year. We had a school shooter at, down at the high school, we had two shooters going down there. I can tell you that we didn't have any mutual aid coming in, so we didn't have any additional officers, EMS crews, or anything like that, so, our guys were very, very taxed. One of the things that was intentionally built into the drill was we took the senior management out of the law center, so Sheriff Droes, Chief Deputy Morton, Jerry Marcellus, Lieutenant Smith, Captain Thomas and myself were evaluators, or safety officers in this, so, it put a lot of responsibilities on the young guys. It was a, a really good test to see where we stand now. Some things went really well, some things we need to tweak procedurally, how we do things. Overall, I'd say the biggest hurdle that we had that day was communications, it was windy, it was cold. Instead of moving inside, Mark was trying to run it out of a squad car, which kind of hampered when we were interacting with school officials, EMS, the fire department, so we're gonna change some things on how we do that. Up until we made contact, did pretty well until we made contact with the active shooter, once we took that out of play, we're starting to move on to different facets, we struggled a little bit, and part of that was a manpower issue. But it was a true test, and I think that there's a lot of things that came to light when we were planning this that we thought would happen, and when we actually ran through the drill, didn't happen, so, you know, we're definitely gonna have to have some training issues on some things, work with other departments on others. The big thing that we're gonna do to solve the communication thing is we have a tactical van that has a radio inside, and has benches, so we can actually stick everybody inside out of the wind a little bit and communicate that way. One of the things that we're gonna work on is getting the different players, like we had the school there, we weren't really utilizing what intel they were getting, we were kind of relying on our own stuff, so, we just gotta tweak that a little bit and how we interact. This was the first time the schools ever played in a scenario, and they really stepped up, did a really good job doing that, and a lot of the other relationships have already been established, and we work really well together, and those things, you know, they're uneventful because we do it so often repetitively, so, it was a good, it was a good drill, a good exercise for us to have. I'm glad it's over. I had to go on vacation.
Julia, this was designed by the Department of Homeland Security?
No, the, it's required-
The scenario?
No, we actually, the planning committee came up with it. We have to have a county disaster drill that meets certain standards every five years, and we have to test certain objectives that are defined by Homeland Security, and those objectives pretty much were met, you know, or a good portion of those objectives were met, it's just a matter of refining the objectives and stuff like that.
So, will you be evaluated on this outside of your own internal evaluation?
No, it's more or less a feedback. With the planning committee, there'll be an after action report with all the departments, and then we'll kind of compile it and say, hey, these are the lessons learned, this went well, this didn't go well, we need to address these issues, and then we qualify, this qualifies, and enables us to get funding from both the state and the federal government for grants and things like that.
Okay. Very good, well, I know it was a cool, it was a cold morning, I think nobody expected that, but I'm glad that you had a good result. Any other items for the council? I did want to recognize that we have three students from the Pekin High School Government Class here, and tonight, one of those representatives is Wyatt Loper, whose mom Rebecca works at our planning department at front desk, so Wyatt, if you'll just raise your hand and identify yourself to everyone here. Thanks for, thanks for coming, guys, I hope you had a good time and learned a little something. If you have any questions, we'll be around after we adjourn. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Boyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Me and you adjourn.